All right, I'd like to call this Newburyport Public Schools School Committee Business Meeting to Order. It is Monday, May 6, 2024. Mrs. Yell, can you take the roll, please?
Mayor Sean Breeden.
I'm here.
Sarah Hall.
Here.
Brianna Higgins.
Here.
Brian Callahan.
Here.
Andy Boger.
Present.
Juliet Walker.
Present.
Kathleen Shaw.
Here.
All right, can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
President.
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 All right, can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Hall.
Thank you. Did we have anyone interested in public comment this evening? All right, then we will move on to student recognitions. That's a photo up there.
Yes, absolutely.
Sure, yeah.
All right. All right, well, as we do at every school committee meeting, we have an opportunity to honor some great teachers and also some great students. And tonight we'll be recognizing some wonderful students that really did an amazing feat with a lot of hard work and perseverance. So tonight we're going to be recognizing Macy Michaels, Elliot Michaels, and Ethan Thelman for their exceptional achievement. These dedicated students demonstrated exceptional creativity, perseverance by completing a cube mosaic of the Statue of Liberty utilizing a remarkable 600 Rubik's cubes. This achievement is a testament to their hard work and commitment as they spent countless hours after school meticulously assembling this intricate masterpiece. We believe their accomplishment not only showcases their individual talents but also highlights a collaborative spirit fostered within our school community. So just to take a look at some of these pictures, this is them working on it, the final touches. There's a nice article in the Daily News for their achievement, which is well deserved. But the Rubik's Cube mosaics offer diverse educational benefits, especially into STEM. And Ms. Dagel, our STEM teacher, worked very well with these students. They enhance their problem-solving, critical thinking, spatial awareness, and geometry comprehension as the students strategize to manipulate the cubes. The collaborative nature fosters teamwork, communication skills while integrating art, design develops creativity alongside with STEM learning. This activity reinforces STEM concepts in a well-rounded skill for essential future academic and professional success, which actually will tie in nicely to our High School Pathways presentation coming up about skills necessary to be successful. So at this time, I'd like to also call up Assistant Principal Lee Curtis Peray, come on up. And I'd like to call up our students Macy, Elliot, and Ethan. Congratulations. And then once you guys come on over here, we'll take a photo op for your parents. All right, congratulations. It's up to you. Okay, sure. All right. Yes, yes, yep. So the NEF, we'll be talking about another program the NEF is sponsoring this summer, but the NEF was also sponsored, this mosaic challenge for the kids, yes.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Mr. Callahan, are you ready with the warrants?
I am ready. I moved up the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools, amounting in the aggregate $822,887.52. Approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. The first is from our regular business meeting on April 23rd. Are there any corrections? Okay, then can I get a motion to approve the April 23rd minutes?
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We also have a set of minutes from our special meeting for the budget approval on April 29th. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Can I get a motion to approve the April 29th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Theo, we are ready for your report.
Thank you very much. Starting off at the Bresnahan School, the Bresnahan is currently celebrating Mindfulness Week. Each day, teachers will discuss a focus of the day, do a class activity, and during their morning meeting time. The kindergarteners went on a field trip to the Dover Children's Museum in Dover, New Hampshire, and the PTO sponsored a storyteller, Rona Leventhal, sorry if I'm saying that wrong, to perform for students last week. The Institution for Savings also presented to the third grade about the importance of saving and investing money. They facilitated a wonderful interactive presentation and sent each student home with a goodie bag to encourage them to start their own savings. We appreciate their time and dedication to the children of Newburyport. Moving on to the Mullen School, Mullen students had a visit from Pittsburgh Steeler team member Pat Fryermuth on Friday. He discussed the importance of the Mullen values, respect, responsibility, and kindness, and how they helped him be successful. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and a Mullen virtual classroom that links to several read aloud books, videos, coloring pages, self-care breathing strategies, and resources for teachers was recently created by educators Shabon Green and Maggie Flaherty. Congratulations to all of the members of the cast and crew of Matilda and Brian Nickerson for his continued leadership and expertise in directing the production. A big thank you goes out to all of the parents and our community members for their hard work and support. Up at the high school, the Newburyport Public Schools K-12 Performing Arts Waterfront Festival will be held on Saturday, May 18th, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Waterfront Park. We will be celebrating our district's young artists with music, theater, and dance from approximately 800 students. And lastly, congratulations to all of the students who received an academic key at last week's ceremony. I would like to additionally commend the following students for their outstanding speeches and achievements at the event. Newburyport Scholar Artist Bristol Banovic, Bresnahan Scholar Athlete Lauren Brennan, the Class of 2024 Saludatorium Eamon Fadil, and the Class of 2024 Valedictorian Audrey Lachren. That is all from me. Come back to you, Ms. Hall.
Thank you, Theo.
Congrats on your key, Theo.
Thank you.
All right, next we're going here about the Innovation Career Pathways from Mr. Wolf. Did you want to introduce?
Yeah, come on up, Mr. Wolf and his team. So we've been talking a lot about Portrait of a Graduate and Strategic Plan, and this has been in the works, I want to say for many years with the vision of Newburyport High School. And we've been talking about the Pathways Grant for a long time. So this is just an opportunity for the team here to update the school committee and kind of give them an overview of what the Pathways Grant and some of the work that we've been doing is going to pay off. So take it away, Mr. Wolf.
Will do. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. And I'm here with Lauren Ghee, who is our Director of Student Support and played a big role in the writing of the grant, and Dr. Erin Hobbs, who is our Instructional Lead for the Science Department. And so with this first slide here, the state has done a lot of work, actually for the past eight years, around trying to make funds available for more traditional high schools that allows schools to build partnerships with employers, but especially in areas that there are concerns in regards to job potential for the future. And so one of the requirements for this grant is forming a strong relationship with the Mass Hire Workforce Board of the Merrimack Valley Region, which is responsible for pulling together that analysis for our region for in-demand jobs of the future. So for a couple of years now, we've been trying to get in on this opportunity. And really through the leadership of Lauren Ghee and Dr. Hobbs, we were able to get the application accepted for an environmental pathways. And Lauren is going to talk to you a little bit about some of the work that's been going on from when we brought in our College and Career Counselor a couple of years ago, but then how that also really supported us in gaining acceptance to this program, especially as it relates to advisory and some of the work that's been happening down at the middle school. And then Dr. Hobbs is going to talk to you about the pathway that was created and accepted by the state and that we will be implementing at the start of next school year.
Okay. Hi, everyone. So one of the requirements with innovation pathways is for our school to have a MyCap curriculum and a MyCap online platform so that students have a way to be able to track and record their post-secondary plan and making sure that this aligns with their innovation pathway, so their environmental pathway. So meaning that basically they have a platform where they can track the classes that they're taking, the internships or jobs that they're doing in relationship to the pathway, and then also starting to think about their next step after high school and being able to research and figure out kind of those next steps. Maybe it's college, maybe it's a job, a trade, different pathways. And with that, our school is required to have an online platform for students to be able to do that. Right now, we use Naviance to be able to do that, and students have their own accounts and can log in and do different kind of skills and strengths and different questionnaires to better address and hone in on their kind of strengths or what they're exploring. And then it's also used to be able to track their classes that they're taking, to be able to research colleges, to be able to start the college process, and to be able to apply to schools. So Naviance is what we use right now at the high school, and we are currently looking into other platforms to be able to extend to our other schools in the district so that students can use the same platform, starting as young as in middle school, to be able to have the same platform and be able to look back on what they've learned throughout middle to high school in regards to the post-secondary plan. This really does align with our goal as a school and as a district around the Portrait of a Graduate, so making sure that our students do have a post-secondary plan when they're leaving the high school. And really, this MyCap kind of outline will help to support that so that students can have a place and even parents can go in and look at what their student is working on in regards to post-secondary options. And our school counseling department also works with students on this platform, on Naviance, and uses it in a variety of different ways. We work with our ninth graders around interests and skills, so having them do questionnaires to start thinking about it. We work with our 10th graders around their courses and really starting to think about what classes they're going to be taking their junior year and senior year in relation to their post-secondary interests and then junior and senior year. We're really using the platform to dive deep into the college process or trades process or other kind of options for students by research and being able to have a really a place that they can go to for all of that. So that is the kind of platform we're using right now, so Naviance in relation to MyCap. So we are meeting that criteria with innovation pathways, and we'll continue to use it until we decide on the next platform. But all of these platforms are very similar in that way where we are being able to track what our students are doing and helping them have a place to really go to. In addition to that, our College and Career Counselor, Mr. Smith, has worked with the Knox Middle School to be able to help bridge some of this by going on college field trips with the students, having college and career different interests kind of come into the building. So having representatives from different career paths coming in with the Knox Middle School students so that they're getting that understanding and awareness even before they come into the high school. And we're hoping to continue that relationship so that students are more prepared for when they come into the high school and at least can have some kind of experience, whether it's going to see a school or talking with someone in the field. And so that can help them even make their choices for their classes at the high school. And we're really hoping to dive in with that with environmental pathways, so really having conversations with the students at the middle school about this pathway option and what they'll need to do when they come to the high school to prepare for an environmental pathway.
And I think that's it on my end.
All right, everybody, how are you doing tonight? I'm going to speak to what this actually looks like in the high school itself. We applied for the environmental pathway for several reasons, but one, we are definitely primed to take on this pathway with what we have already at the high school. Each pathway requires two technical courses, and those are year-long courses that expose students to skills as well as careers. They also include two advanced courses, and those could include dual enrollment courses or AP courses as well. In addition to that, students are required to complete 100 hours internship within their designated pathway. And so, for example, you can see a suggested sequence for a student where they'd enter high school in the ninth grade. They would take biology as a prerequisite. And then once they enter 10th grade, they'd be taking chemistry with either one of those advanced or technical courses. In addition, that pathway would continue up until their 12th grade year when they would complete their internship, ideally. In addition to that, students are given supports throughout this pathway if they are not meeting the criteria of success within each of their courses. It's designed to provide supports for students if they need extra tutoring, extra resources, so that they can be successful. But ideally, the classes are lining directly to a career of interest or choice. The environmental pathway is not the only pathway that the state has. There are several others. We can expand this to an environmental and life science pathway. The next one that we're looking at applying for, hopefully, is the manufacturing pathway. There's informational technology, healthcare and social assistance, business and finance, and clean energy is currently being piloted, but also a potential pathway for us to consider. But ideally, we have multiple pathways for kids to choose from that we can offer them to support their interests. And these are all pathways that have been identified as the state as areas of high need for jobs and students. And you want to talk about the skills program?
Definitely. And so really wrapping it up in terms of our next steps, as Erin was talking about, is to obviously, as we implement next year our environmental pathways, but also looking forward to apply for additional pathways such as the manufacturing and the health services. But then also, by gaining into this program, there are other opportunities that we're able to explore such as the Massachusetts Skills Capital Grant Program, which would allow us to apply for funding for equipment for these programs. This is still something that we're learning more about. And just for example, with the innovation pathways, it was a pretty involved process and took us about two and a half years to understand to successfully complete the application. And then the partnership that we now have with the Merrimack Valley Workforce Board has been great. That also opens up the door for different state funding as well that goes to mass hire, regional mass hire programs across the state. But again, it really all kind of stems to what the in-demand jobs are of the future here in Massachusetts. And that is our presentation.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you so much for doing this.
It's really helpful just to hear you talk about it as a whole and give the full presentation. I was, so just an overall question, what changed in the offerings at the high school between before the pathway and after the pathway?
Do you want to talk about the new?
We have added one course to meet the criteria, and that is Conservation Biology. It's a technical course. Students will have exposure to, obviously, just general introductory conservation bio. And then the second semester is going to open up students to experience the criteria needed to get Mass Wildlife Rehabilitation Certification. So at the end of the second semester, students will actually have all the content knowledge to take the test, to get their certification. So that's great for entering, say, environmental science in general, but also, say, vet tech or something along those lines as well. So that was one change to our courses, but we had the other courses in place already. So as we look at our current courses that we have and moving forward, we're going to be ideally lining them up to support students in a career path is our goal.
And I think an important thing to also hit upon, some of the courses that are only a couple of years old, when we had first started this process about two and a half years ago, we learned so much through kind of failing in regards to that process. But Erin had started her Environmental Field Studies class, which was directly in line with the pathways. And a lot of that came through consult with partners that we formed over the past few years. So for example, the Gulf of Maine Institute is one of the members on our advisory board, which you do need to have to receive this pathway. And they've been consulting with Erin on the design of courses. Another class that we're looking to expand upon is our Biotechnology Class that right now is just a semester-based course. But the idea is to learn how we can build that into a year-long course, but also transcend multiple pathways as well, such as the environmental, medical, or the manufacturing.
Thank you. That's really exciting. And so you mentioned that this starts next year.
Correct.
So has anyone done this 100-hour internship yet, or is that something you're planning for four years from now?
Correct. So students that, we do have students that, how many hours do some of our, do you want to talk about the internship program?
So we do have an internship program right now, so there are multiple students that are doing internships within the science field that just aren't innovation pathways designated students yet. But it can range anywhere from 100 to 250 hours, depending on how much they commit to each year. Some students do a semester, some students do the full year, even into the summer. So it just depends. But our College and Career Counselor has a lot of great connections already too and partners with Dr. Hobbs in terms of making sure that our students are aware of those kind of opportunities. And this really, I mean, our students already are doing such a wonderful job of being able to make those decisions of what classes align with their interests and their post-secondary plans. But this pathway really just organizes that for them and helps them to be able to see, okay, I'm going to take this class, this class, this class, and then my internship. And now I have a better idea of what I want to do for after high school. So again, our students are really, they're really amazing, and so many of them do have this plan. But this is just our way of really kind of bringing that all together for them and so that they can be recognized once they do complete all those things that they need to for the pathway.
Would you be able to tell us anything about the timeline for applying for additional pathways? How that works, any restrictions or timeline?
Yeah, so our plan is to apply for a planning grant, which then allows us to kind of bring people onto the team to start the application process next year. So it really comes down to a question of if we will, so now that we have the framework down and we also understand kind of the expectations of what needs to go into a pathway, I'm hoping that we should be able to apply for two pathways next school year.
So potentially, we could have two additional pathways for fall of 2025?
Correct.
Awesome. All right, thank you. Are there any other questions, Mr. Booker?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, have you selected yet or thought about which pathways those might be? And then just in terms of scale, I'm curious how many students you anticipate availing themselves this next year? And then it sounds like it's really building. So thank you for all this work over the last two and a half years. It's a remarkable amount of prep work just to get this thing off the ground.
Yeah, the advanced manufacturing is definitely one that we're interested in. Erin Smith, the College and Career Counselor, he set us up with a conversation with the Munter's Corporation over in Amesbury, which would be on board with serving as one of our partners once we get into that process. And I believe the other one that we would also be interested would be the, what was it, social? I forget the name.
Health careers.
The Health Careers Pathway, and especially where we have the hospital right up the street. And Erin's just done a great job of connecting students up at the hospital with different internships. So that one just makes a lot of sense. And that's a great example of then where the Capital Skills Grant comes into play. So some schools that we've toured, after they've received the pathway, they then apply for the Capital Skills Grant funding. And so some schools now have like a mock, like hospital room in their buildings, so where students can learn medical assisting and have all the kind of the equipment that you would see in a hospital room, which is pretty cool, so making it very real for the students.
And then just in terms of scale, do you have a sense of that? Oh, yeah, sorry.
So we are going to begin next year with a smaller number, approximately 15 to 20 is our first year pilot entering. And then they move up, obviously. We are going to target sophomores and then, or freshmen going into their sophomore year during fourth election. Next winter, we'll target them then, but it will be in the fall this year. And then it would increase over time based on our class size and availability. And these students, if they're in the pathway, are going to be prioritized for the classes to meet their criteria to make sure they get in to the pathway, get all the requirements.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Walker.
Yeah, so I think as a parent and as somebody who's talked to other parents about these additional offerings at the high school, I just want to be clear about what the purpose of the Pathways Program is. For example, for students who are maybe already on a college track or already taking advanced courses, is this really for them, or is this really to encourage students that maybe normally wouldn't, were lacking some of that direction, or maybe aren't necessarily on a track for a four-year college? Who is the intended student, like in your view? Because I believe the state probably set this up for a certain reason and had intentions about what the target sort of student population was that they thought needed this sort of more focused track. So I think it's just helpful because sometimes I'm worried that the more we offer, I think it's great. I'm very supportive of this, but I sometimes think the communication of what we're offering, and it just keeps going to the same circle of people who are already taking advantage of a lot of these extra things that we offer at the high school. And I'm worried that we're going to be missing the intended audience, which is maybe some of those students that need a little extra focus or a little extra encouragement on the career route.
I can speak to that. It's actually intended to expose kids to both career after, directly after high school, and students who might want to pursue a college career as well. It all depends on how we line up their internship. And part of the requirement is that we improve equity and access into the pathway as well. So we will, it's a lottery system to get into each pathway, and so many seats have to be designated for students who are identified as high-need students so that way we make sure we provide equity and access for all the kids in our community.
Great. I think that's exactly the kind of response I was hoping that you would provide because I think that's the audience that we sometimes miss that aren't intention, aren't already, don't already have those resources and supports and aren't already paying attention to these extra offerings and need that little extra guidance and direction.
Very good question.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. This is exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we're going to be hearing about eighth-grade math supports from Mr. Marcos. Can I come on up?
Yeah. As we've discussed, I think, a couple times during school committee, there was questions around eighth-grade math, and we figured we might as well have Mr. Marcos and kind of just give us a overview of some of that data. Mr. Marcos, take it away.
Good, thank you. Awesome, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight. Hopefully, I can present some answers. We do have some answers that we have a plan in place, so we'll start with that. First slide done. All right, so just to give kind of an overview of where we've been, kind of where we're going. So the great part about the algebra course So the great part about the Algebra course in the eighth grade is it allows our students to take a high school-level course. And it's rigorous, like a high school-level course. And it allows the students to really be challenged and that are ready enough for the challenge. There is a process to get into the Algebra course. So in seventh grade, in just a couple of weeks, our seventh graders will take the Iowa Placement Test. We'll take a look at their grades over the course of the, you know, three trimesters. And then we'll take a look at previous MCAS scores. And then we'll also take a look at their I-Ready scores. So students have to meet a certain criteria in all of those categories. And then students are also allowed to wave in. Because again, we don't want to restrict a student from taking a challenging course. If we, you know, meet with the parents, they're allowed to wave in if they meet one out of the three criteria. But we've never had anything in place to support those students in the summertime. So we know that students are coming in with some gaps in their, in their learning in math, but we don't want to discourage them from taking the course. And I'm going to get to that point a little bit later in the presentation. We also work very closely, obviously, with Andy and his team, with Lauren and Megan Horst as the NHS Math ILT, on the criteria, on the sequence and course of the, of the course, the mapping of the course, and just making sure that we're truly aligned with our high school teammates up there. And one thing that as we've dove deeper into it is really the coherence of the MCAS test is to the eighth-grade standards, not to Algebra. So we are putting students in that potentially have some gaps. And we're taking just a brief pause for about six weeks to teach some of those eighth-grade standards. And you're going to see that data come up. And I think just fortunate enough for us, the achievement catches up in grade 10. So we're seeing some students that may be a little bit behind and have some deficiencies, some gaps on some of their learning. But we're looking, we're seeing those students make it up on that MCAS in grade 10. Okay? So if we just look at the screen here, there's just some data. So up top is obviously the interim data, the middle-of-the-year data from I-Ready from last year, broken down by grade level. And then we have our interim data from this year. And I think this is where some of the questions were coming at our, at our last meeting or the last time we spoke about this. So if you take a look at our, let's just take a look at last year's grade seven cohort, which is obviously this year's grade eight cohort. So that first kind of column where it says progress median, we have, you know, 79% of our students in grade seven last year that were making progress towards their goal. If you look at the next column over, 43% of those students met their goal by the interim last year. If you look at the next two columns over where it says 39% and 18%, think of that as like a stretch goal or an SGP that is higher than like 60 on the MCAS. Okay? So last year, at the interim, we had about 18% of our students meet their stretch goal. Okay? If we take a look at, just focusing on just strictly eighth grade, if we look at our same cohort the following year on the bottom, we currently have 56% of our students that are making progress towards their goal. 34% of the students have already met their goal. And again, if you look over to the next two columns, 23% are making progress towards their stretch goal. And then 7% of students have already met their stretch goal. So before I talk about kind of the specifics of that data, we have just a ton of interventions that are in place. Okay? Another thing I want to clarify that I don't think has ever been truly clarified to you is we do have an interventionist. We have one. Okay? That person services both ELA and math, essentially as a tier-two interventionist during our academic support slash flex block. So our flex block is kind of a multifaceted approach. And this is all a part of like kind of that nuanced discussion around why is kind of eighth-grade data where it's at. So if we look at our academic support, we have teachers, our Algebra teachers, our grade eight math teachers, same people are using that group for small group interventions in the class. We're using I-Ready, obviously, for that. We're using small group instruction for that. We're using explicit instruction for a student that may be missing on a specific concept or two. And again, trying to fill up, fill those gaps. We use our SST, MTSS process to potentially put those tier-two interventions in place for students that may not be making progress. That's for our top students, that's for our lowest students, and everybody in between. I think some of the great things that we've seen over the past couple of years is we really have a very, we're using high-yielding teaching strategy in the classroom. We're using, you know, a lot of standards-based, we're using ongoing formative assessments on a daily basis, exit tickets, you know, bell ringers to, I guess, fill in some of those gaps for our Algebra students. So you may be learning an Algebra concept, but getting some exit tickets and some bell ringers on some MCAS grade eight standards, which again, will allow us to hopefully address some of the concerns and some of the gaps that our students are having. We've also had, you know, this is year three of our MCAS, ELA, and Math Bootcamp, where students by grade level are invited to attend this after school, just one day a week. It starts pretty much second or third week of January, and we run it through, essentially right up to the test. So like last week was the last session for math. It's pretty well-attended. We send letters home, and parents call us, and they ask, should my kid really come? We say, absolutely. So they're very supportive of the program. We've seen significant progress from the students that we're inviting that go there. And it's strictly, you know, what it says, MCAS Bootcamp. They're getting exposed to testing strategies and obviously, specific questions, or specific types of questions that we'd see on MCAS. So to go back to kind of our data, so we presented this data. So I'm just going to focus on one group of students. So let's just dive a little bit deeper. And I think it's a consistent, I guess, analysis or findings that we've had since the beginning of the year when we looked at our MCAS data. So currently, we have 57 Algebra students. 33 of those students have not met their I-Ready goal. Five of those 33 are exceeding expectations on MCAS. Okay? But they have not met their I-Ready goal. If we look at 22 of those 33, and I know we can break these numbers down, 22 of the 33 waved into Algebra. And then 19 of those 22 reached their stretch goal. So that tells, for me, a very, very clear story that if we put a hypothetical and we had these, say, 19 of 22 didn't get, didn't wave into Algebra, I'm very confident that those students would have met their stretch goal. And that grade eight data would look pretty identical to the year before, if not better. I'm not the mathematician, but if you put 19 into 158, that number gets up to about 79%. And that other number will be closer to 20% as far as students meeting their, their reach goal. So what do we do from here? We know that we have a challenge in front of us, so what's the remedy? So one of the things that we've decided to do with, you know, my CL, Beth Dollis, and the rest of my math team, is looking for ways to change the wave-in process. Okay? We want kids to take Algebra. We want kids to be challenged. We want, we don't want to discourage anybody from that course. So what we're going to do this summer, it'll be the first time, first time that we do this, is students will have the same wave-in process, having to meet at least one of the three criteria. We're going to bring the parents in like we normally do, have a conversation, and just map, why do you want to take this course? Understand the demands of the course, what it entails. It's a fast-paced course, it is a high school-level course. And after that, we're going to assign, essentially, summer work, assigned modules specific to that student's needs. So if a student wants to wave in, based on their I-Ready scores, based on their I-Ready placement, based on their grades, and all the other formative sets that we have in seventh grade, our teachers will be able to assign five to six modules that will meet your needs. So if I'm a student in seventh grade, let's just say I've met two criteria out of the three, I don't want to wave in, but my parents want to wave me in, so I'm getting waved in. And I'm struggling in algebraic thinking in I-Ready. We can, we can go into I-Ready and look at some of the concepts that you're struggling in, or by standard, and assign those specific modules for you. And you'll have to complete those by a certain date to essentially enroll in Algebra. And we feel like that's one really big step in kind of, you know, righting the ship here. And hopefully, this will provide some more support for our students to obviously, you know, get some more success out of them and make them feel more confident going into high school, obviously, that they're able to accomplish and grow in math practice. Other things we're looking at is really exploring some of the flex options in grade seven. Is there an opportunity during grade seven to address some of those, you know, by time students come in from grade six to seven, we have a pretty good idea of kind of who those Algebra kids are, who those Algebra kids are? And could we start to address some of those standards during those flex blocks, where it is a win block? So possibly using some, our teachers as kind of enrichment, interdention, two days a week each. And then again, looking at some additional staff training. My staff has done a really nice job at looking at I-Ready, again, and really examining how we're using it. It's an intervention program. All of our students are using it. All the students don't need an intervention program. So again, looking at and saying, how can we really target a student? So there's two pathways essentially on using I-Ready. One, Nick Marcos goes on, I log in, and I follow my learning path. So it's going to give me what I need based on how I've assessed myself and on my tests. The other way that we've been doing, and we can get a little bit better at this, is assigning specific lessons for me. So specifically, I'm struggling with adding fractions or multiplying decimals. I can, the teacher can now go back and say, you know what, you are weak at this, let me assign you some practice at home, finish a couple of assignments, and we'll come back and maybe use that flex block or use class time, you know, to support you that way. So that's kind of, that's it in a nutshell. Happy to take questions. I know I threw a lot of numbers out there, but open for a conversation.
Ms. Walker?
Yeah, so thank you for that question.
Of course.
One of the things I was thinking about is, obviously, there are a number of things driving why kids want to wave in eighth grade. I think one of the motivations is being ahead, being ready to take advanced courses in high school, right?
Of course.
So are you collaborating also with the high school on maybe some, or maybe Mr. Wolf has some responses to this, I don't want to put him on the spot, but when, you know, for maybe kids that just aren't ready to take Algebra in eighth grade, but don't want to miss out on being able to take those advanced math tracks when they get into high school, are there other options for them in advance of ninth grade or even between ninth and 10th grade?
It's a great question. So we do talk about that pathway with parents that want to come in and say, you know what, we don't want our child to miss out on something when they're juniors, seniors. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wolf, but essentially, a student can double up their sophomore year with that Algebra II and Geometry, which pairs very nicely from a conceptual standpoint, and then be right back on track. So yeah, we do have those conversations. Did I nail it?
You did.
All right, just making sure. So yeah, so those conversations are had, but it's, you know, it's, it is challenging. We never want to, like we said, we don't want to discourage a family, you know, wanting to push their child, and we don't want to, you know, discourage a kid from taking a chance and, you know, growing in that instance.
On the data points slide, your first slide here, it says, opportunity to take a high school-level course, pilot, spring 2023. But you've been offering Algebra I to eighth grades for some time. So what's the pilot aspect?
So that was, so that was what we're pioneering now essentially for this year and last year, taking a look at some of those summer courses and some of that work that we're going to offer. So this has kind of been a, an ongoing conversation within my team of, okay, how can we kind of fix it? So it's kind of a, I guess, a year later, diving into these modules. So that's kind of clarifying that.
Thank you.
Yeah, it wasn't clear, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, so the pilot aspect is how you're implementing this to hopefully make it more successful for all students.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is really helpful. So just trying to kind of wrap my brain around, I think some of the questions I had about eighth grade is not, so part of it's MCAS scores, right? They're a little bit lower, the SGPs are a little lower. But even the I-Ready presentations over the last couple of years, right? That's from your baseline to your interim to your end, you're not seeing the growth that you are in some of the other grades. So this presentation makes it sound as though Algebra is, you know, driving a lot of that? Is that when you, when you disaggregate kids who are in Algebra versus kids that are not, are the I-Ready numbers looking different for the kids that are not in Algebra? Are they looking closer to like grade six and seven?
Yes, that's, that's correct. And the other thing that, in eighth grade, there is, so it's also the way we're implementing I-Ready right now. So I-Ready is essentially you're using your My Learning Path. For some, for some faculty or most faculty, we're not penalizing students for not doing an intervention program. So again, it's the amount of time that you put into the program. So again, we're looking at the ways, how can we deliver it better? Potentially looking at stations in the classroom, right? Maybe getting 20 minutes a week, 40 minutes, because that's kind of the sweet number that they want us to get, that 20 to 40 minutes. So again, it's really looking at and examining our implementation process. But if you take these numbers out, I would say the vast majority of our students are, their, their levels are growing. The vast majority of students are reaching their goal, some are reaching their stretch goal. And if you definitely take their numbers out, our students that are, that are going lower are definitely growing as long as they're implementing it. The other thing that happens in eighth grade is, you know, the amount of work you get in eighth grade increases significantly across the board. So again, just looking at my eighth-grade team and saying, okay, how can we balance this, you know, to make sure that students are getting what they need from a potential intervention program or filling in their gaps? And that's really across the board. It's not just math, it's ELA, it's science, social studies, and obviously, world language as well.
So just two other things that I, that had popped into my head, and this is just kind of food for thought.
Yeah.
But one is, this idea of Algebra in eighth grade is, seems conceptually very similar to the idea of early college, right? That in 11th and 12th grade, you're putting kids in a college class, there's expected to college-level work, where they're not in college yet, right? They're still 16, 17 years old. And so schools and districts that have implemented early college at a fairly larger scale, right? Hundreds of kids are seeing that it's really only successful, except for the, you know, handful of your very high achievers. For the most part, it's only successful if you pair it with very specific student supports and intervention blocks and like, how do we help a kid that's 17, who doesn't actually know all the content that, you know, a kid in college knows, to, you know, perform at that level? And also, just the time management needed for that, right?
Of course.
Because those are, again, skills that they just haven't learned yet. And so it seems very similar that I, I like, because I'm hearing this from you, the flock, thinking about using the flex block differently, that how do we put those supports in place in real time to help them achieve at, you know, a level that, these are probably not the right words, but they're not supposed to achieve that yet.
Correct.
Like if that's, if it's supposed to be a more rigorous course, then we have to provide some kind of, you know, net for them essentially, for whenever they're sort of like falling back. The, the other thing that's just sort of, I was thinking about is, you have in here systemic, systematic and explicit instruction, which we know works really well for certain students. And then other students, and I know, I'm sure you know this really well, with the curriculum that the district uses and the way things have been shifting in math to a more conceptual understanding, that sometimes when you offer that really explicit instruction to kids, it's like, oh, okay, that, you just, you just gave me the pathway, like I know how to follow that pathway. And then for other kids, they're just seeing like this black and white number, but they can't see the larger schema coming behind it. And it's like, how do we potentially offer, you know, because I'm not sure how well I-Ready does with this, you know, it's so standard-based, it's My Learning Path, I'm getting this module. But are there opportunities for maybe like project-based learning, something that's like over the, over the course of a couple of weeks, we're trying to solve this problem together as a group? And like, that's, you know, when, when you're in the younger grades, it might be like, how big can my playground be in this size, right? But like, once you get that concept, it's, things start, like the schema starts to make sense a little bit more than, than the explicit instruction.
Yeah, and that's happening on a-
I don't know how I'm articulating this well, but it just needs to be paired.
No, you are.
And so I'm just wondering if like, there's other opportunities for that conceptual learning as well?
Absolutely. You're seeing that, you know, there's a systematic approach to the SAVIS program, right? There's A through F. You can't get through A through F and wanting to get through 180 lessons in 180 days. That's, it's not the reality of what we're working right in the calendar, because kids are absent, we have field trips and all the nine yards, you know that. But if, yeah, you, you will see conceptual understandings and project-based learning happening in grade six, seven, and eighth throughout the entire year, because they are, you know, linking prior standards and future standards into these projects. So kids are definitely getting that hands-on experience, along with that conceptual, that big-picture stuff. And then one of the things that we've always talked about, you know, for the, for the last three years is, you know, what is our next move from a data standpoint? So what's the data telling us? And how are we going to, you know, drive our instruction? But like, not just as a buzzword, like truly driving it, taking a look at, all right, we have these two units, or I have this one unit, how do I get the students to understand? What's the end goal? So again, having those conversations with my CL leaders, having those conversations, you know, through the evaluation, observation, feedback, and where can we get better in our instruction to maximize our learning? Yeah, but that first point is 100% accurate as far as, you know, looking at that grade seven flex, how can we address some of those things and really maximizing? It's five hours a week for a lot of students. That's a lot of time. Um, it can make up for some of that lost time that we have, um, throughout the year.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Mr. Marcos.
Absolutely, my pleasure. Have a good night, everybody.
All right, Mr. Callahan, gonna talk us through the NEF naming opportunities review?
I hope so. Okay, so the naming of, uh, facilities, you guys all know, the NEF retains a list of all the buildings and what rooms or areas, um, are available for namings and the dollar amounts associated there. We're supposed to vote on this and approve it every year. Uh, Mr. Reardon says he remembers doing it. I don't remember having done this, but he's smarter than me, so he must have done. So I had asked, and I'm on the NEF full disclosure, so, um, I had asked for this and just any number of reasons why it was delayed, it was delayed, and then Carrie O'Donnell had the building principals go over it, make sure that rooms that were still there hadn't been converted into closets or what have you, and went over the list. So all the building principals kind of signed off that they are accurate. Now, we come to the policy that it's all based on FF, um, adopted 2017, and the one thing I want to read, I'm not going to read the whole thing, it's in the packet. Um, the school committee has the authority to approve the naming and renaming of buildings, structures, and facilities located on school property. School committee also has the authority to name subsections, basically the rooms, right? And then we say, or we voted on back in 2017, the school committee may elect to authorize the designation of naming rights for specific portions of the facilities to the NEF through the advanced approval of the list naming opportunities to be reviewed annually. So there's that. So the one question I think we have to ask about the policy is the part about when the naming of a specific place, so say there's a naming opportunity for the principal's office, which we did, which the NEF just sold. It seems here that it should still have to come before the school committee to say, okay, that's just how I'm reading it. Um, written request should specify the intent of the requestor and reasons why this particular name would fit the facility, which is kind of funny, because earlier in the document it says that it's, the, it shouldn't have to be specific to a facility in case they can use it a different way in the future. So it's kind, the two paragraphs kind of contradict each other there. Um, and we don't have to accept anything, so I guess the question I have is, if the policy is this, and at one point we gave the NEF considerable leeway of doing this, and we want to continue doing that, um, at what point do we come into the process? So the principal's office of the high school was just named for, um, a former principal, and Mr. Gallagher can give us a little bit more detail about that.
Mary Larned.
Yeah.
Just passed away.
Yes, um, so that was all, that's done and dusted. We, we never heard about it until the NEF meeting, basically. So, um, it's going to have to go back into policy, but it also kind of goes with FinCom because it's money. What's that?
I would say it doesn't go into policy.
No, if your, if the policy needs to be rewritten, yes.
But I have, I have an update on that.
Okay. So the, the one thing we want to touch on too is the, the gift. So if someone comes directly to us and says, I want to put my name on X, and we say that's cool, then we have to vote to accept it. But we don't have to accept the money that the NEF takes in until they give it to us. They can take as much money as they want in the names of the schools, and until they give us that money, we don't vote on accepting it, because it's their money. So here we are.
So I have a little update on the policy.
Actually, I'm sorry, do you want to go over all the, the principal's office donation story? Or do you?
What's that?
The money that's accepted for that, yeah.
Yeah, so she was, uh, I think we, I think we did mention that school committee.
At the end of the last meeting, right?
Correct. So, and Mr. Reden, probably correct me, but from what I've learned about Mary Larned, she is the first, uh, she's like a pioneer for, uh, a lot of different areas. She was the first, uh, high school principal, first woman high school principal. She was the first woman, uh, president of the Rotary Club. Uh, and she was also, I think, one of the first women on the board of, um, for one of the local banks, um, and, right?
Thank you, right. Institution.
So she's, when you're looking at, I think criteria to name, uh, room or a principal's room, um, she has, I think, all the background and her dedication in life to the, uh, city of Newburyport, Newburyport Public Schools is immense. And from my understanding, um, the family reached out to the NEF about, uh, naming and that's how that, that ball got, got rolling.
Sure. This is only coming up because we're supposed to approve it every year and we finally got it, but with the, regarding the policy itself, and I say it's all time, if we're not going to follow the policies, we shouldn't even have them. So either we work in conjunction with the NEF, so the request comes to them, they come to us, we do our bit, they do theirs, but that, that has to be in here, right? Or we just get rid of it.
So this is not the first time we've talked about this.
Right, but it just happens, they just got a, a big check.
And it was referred to the policy, at the policy at best was referred to the policy committee, um, a while ago, and we actually asked for legal, um, input on it, and we did get an illegal opinion back, who suggested that our policy definitely needs to be clarified. Um, this is my read, and I would be happy to bring more information back. We actually reviewed this at our March meeting, but we were unable to meet April because I have an issue in April. So, um, we're going to meet again in May, we can confirm this, but, um, we, we did discuss it at our last policy meeting, um, and we do have, um, so like a confirmation from attorney about clarifying. Um, we do have the ability, my understanding, my read from the attorney's review is that it's not out of our purview to defer or to refer, um, naming rights, so to speak, but that ultimately we do have that, we do have to take that responsibility for final approval. And I think that probably the process needs to be clarified with the NEF. I don't think it necessarily, um, would change or make a significant kink in how they do this, but we just do need to clarify that it is ultimately our responsibility to make sure that we have final authority over the naming rights for individual locations in the school. So even giving that list to them, be, even approving it and saying, yes, you can list these, these rooms.
Just means these are possible.
Naming the actual, it just says it's possible, exactly. Thank you, Mayor. So I personally, I think, two things, like, um, Mr. Callahan, I'm, I'm really glad you finally brought this list in front of us, because when we talked to the NEF previously, I mean, as you can see on the list, it says 2015, and they haven't even updated it.
I don't know, I think it's just that top one.
They forgot to change the date.
Yeah.
They said that they hadn't updated it in years, and I think we have seen it in some fashion since I've been on the committee, but we, I think we need to clarify exactly what we do with it every year. I think it does need to be reviewed and updated every year so that, you know, if a room use changes or anything like that. Um, so there's that, it's just sort of a two-step process. One is, is the approval of the recommended rooms that they can advertise, um, and then the second is actual, I think we need to clarify that we do have final approval of the name. I'm not going to necessarily say we have to undo prior process, but I think I can, the policy subcommittee can come back with more of a nuanced discussion next time, and maybe some recommendations for modifying the policy, and then a procedure that we can clearly communicate to NEF. And again, it's not to like pull, you know, their ability to, to advertise these. In fact, when we talked about this with the NEF previously as part of our fundraising subcommittee, um, you know, they said they rarely get requests for naming rooms, so it's not like this is a common thing. Um, so I think we have time, um, to work this through, but I would prefer to maybe mull on this a little bit more and not maybe take direct action tonight, and just make sure that what we actually are approving is, you know, thought through and clarified. And I agree, Mr. Callahan, we should have policies that we actually follow and that are useful.
I think that makes sense, especially where the, the policy needs some clarification.
Well, so what do, what do we do about the money they just accepted for the principal's office?
Well, we, I mean, I think they will follow in, uh, quite past practice. So, I mean, we could probably, at the next school committee, kind of have a, you know, overview of that and, and why.
Of that specific?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that might be best. I think, I honestly'd have, like, based on what you explained, I don't think there's reason to have any concern over it, but it might be good to just-
We have a, there's a board meeting, I'm sorry.
Well, no, I was just saying, it might be good, you know, given that we ultimately have authority, maybe just so that they're, to cover them and if any future complaints, that we ultimately bless this, so that, because I mean, ultimately, we, that's who we are, we're the protectors of the building. We protect the NEF too in that way, right? Because if somebody questioned why the NEF gave that right to, and they can say, well, we went to the school committee, they gave us, you know, final okay on this. So it might be best if we do that.
And I think a school committee has the ultimate say on naming, uh, naming rights, just because it, if it was something, you know, outside the building, or if there was a, another person that the school committee, the school committee felt should have something named, then you all have that, that ability to do that too, so.
Um, so the NEF has a board meeting next Wednesday, and I presume that means, is our next meeting on the 20th, school committee?
You can be attached with me if it seems like-
I won't be here at that 20th meeting.
On the 20th, okay. I'll be here. I go to the, I'm on, on the board.
I don't know that there are any, really any actions on their part, it's more on our end, just kind of clarifying the policy. If we want to review it with the NEF, we can do that, but it may, it might be good to have this group review our recommendations first, um, and then if we want to send it to the, refer it to the NEF.
Well, in the event I can't get the, you know, the story about that, that one particular room, I can get that at that meeting.
It sounds like, yeah, Superintendent has it, yeah.
A brief presentation, absolutely.
So just so I'm clear, are there, are there actually two things that need our approval here? Because there's the, there's the list of naming opportunities, which it sounds like needs annual approval, but then we also have this, it's come before us, the $10,000 for the principals, naming the principals. So is that actually two things?
Well, the thing about the naming is only coming up now, because we're talking about the policy, which previously we probably would have just said, hey, they gave us the name, they named this room, thank you.
Right.
So.
But is, am I making sense, are there potentially two separate approvals here?
I think you're right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's what clarifying the policy is going to let us do. Because I think, I mean, every year I've been on school committee, which has been a while now, if you look around the table, I am the senior.
You're the senior!
I am the senior, which is sad and weird at the same time. But, um, I think every year we've had a pretty robust conversation about this, and I think most of it comes down to, you know, the school committee still, just we haven't had that many instances where like, so now this is the perfect test, test case, right?
Yeah.
So in my head, it feels like when they, when they do have a donation like this, they obviously get to keep the money, but they have to submit that and say, hey, look, we got this money, and that money will go towards sale lot, you know, two years from now, whatever. But, you know, we'll, we'll do this every year, but something like that, if a specific naming, especially if a specific dollar amount comes in, I feel like that should be something that they have to bring to us to approve.
I agree.
That's, just makes sense.
So do we want to not do anything now on this, off the list just by itself? Because this is Paul, which is not where I can do anything for the next meeting?
And I saw your hand, Michelle?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm just, you know, being mindful and, you know, the NEF does great service for, for the schools and the community, but I'm, I guess I'm unclear about how they do their vetting. I mean, there's something here in the policy, but do they have a policy?
Yeah. I don't know what it is worth for, but yeah, they're going to not, they're not going to take a political naming thing, you know, it's going, it's almost always someone who's associated with the schools or a bank, you know, things. I mean, if you look at the list, that, that all the things are already named, there are four, um, like former staff, the last one we did was last year, the science teacher.
I mean, it's actually across the board. If you look at the whole list, I mean, someone's mom has a room named after them who has no connection to Newburyport.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so, I, I do think, I mean, that's been somewhat of a conversation too, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be helpful to have that.
It's, it's, yeah. So do they have any process? I don't know, I don't think, and not when I was on the board, I think we ever went through anything like that.
It's probably through Exco.
Yeah.
It's just them, and then they come to the full board and say, we voted on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Brian, with all due respect, but you said, oh, we've already sold, you know, you said, we, NEF already sold it, you know, basically, and so, you know, I understand that we're getting money, you know, for that, but that should be the only criteria for getting, you know, and this has nothing to do with it.
Well, that, that was part of our conversation in the past too, right? Like, and I, I bring up the example, like, the, the fitness room at the high school is named after Coach Welch, Bob Welch, who was my, who was head of physics education when I was at school, my dad's basketball coach and whatnot. But like, a group of his older friends, you know, like, were put through this process of where they had to fundraise to name like something, you know, a guy gave like 40 years of his life to Newburyport, and I don't even think they got to the number that they were supposed to, and they, they, you know, NEF worked with them, but, you know, I felt like that was difficult, because it was, you know, someone I knew that was very deserving, and I was like, wow, they have to, you know, go through this fundraising process just to honor somebody who, who, you know, did it well, but then someone whose money's not an issue can say, hey, I'll give you a check for $5,000, can you name it after my Uncle Charlie, who was just a super guy, loved chocolate?
Really good example.
So, I don't know.
And the other thing is, um, on the grayed out areas here, it doesn't give a, things that have already been named?
Those are the ones that already have been accepted.
Yeah, I'd love to know what the amount was.
I'm sure they have a copy of the, of the list, yeah.
Okay. Because I went on the website and like, it's like email us and, you know, we'll talk to you.
I think it's pretty consistent between rooms, I don't think it varies a whole lot.
I think each category is more or less, but it, you're right.
I, I just, I'm just-
Like last year, we had a math room get, get, um, not donated, but honored for Stephen Politas, who had passed away.
Oh, that's the one.
And that was an awesome ceremony, you know, and just, you know, their, their son, I think, I think they, I think the family gave the money for it, but, I mean, that was, that was awesome.
Right.
You know, it's a longtime teacher, his wife also taught there for a long time, so that was kind of a great, great moment, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, all right, well, the only thing I want to say is, if we can, they, they're going to want to do a naming, a little ceremony too, so we're going to kind of, if we're going to vote on that part of it, that principal's office one, it would have to be on the 20th meeting.
We could potentially do that.
I think that's fine, and then, and then I can be prepared to present on some modifications to the policy as well.
Okay.
Mr. Callahan, just because you're the bridge, so to speak.
Well, thank you.
For many things, but to the NEF specifically.
I was going to say Uber driver, but bridge is fine.
Can you talk about the discussions in the NEF about strategy in regards to fundraising? Is this, is this something that they want to get out there? Do they, do they want people to know that there's an opportunity to name things? Or is it more historically what the mayor's talking about, which is, they sort of want to reserve these for special cases?
A lot of those discussions are in, um, executive committee, which I'm not a part of, and they come to us during the full board and say, we talked about this, and here we are.
I've seen them talk about it before, like around teacher tribute time, like this time of year, they'll also talk about like naming rights, things.
Yep. But this isn't like pushed out.
It's not pushed out, no, but I've, I've, I've seen it talked about before.
Well, that'd be interesting from a capital standpoint, long term, you know, so there's opportunities here to improve our facilities.
So, actually, I was just going to say, yeah, that's the thing that I actually have an issue with, is that these are not necessarily renovations to classrooms.
It's just a name, yeah.
They are just named, so, you know, it's, they're, you know, there is a whole other discussion about, you know, new facilities and how you go about naming new, new additions, but these are not, there's not like these rooms are being renovated.
Although some of them, like the Jaclyn one was the fitness space, right?
Yeah, so some of them are just like an existing numbered room that gets a name.
Or just a seat in the auditorium.
Or that.
So, so tracking the funds is an interesting component as well, you know, where the NEF probably.
The money definitely all gets spent on programming and stuff like that.
Sure. And I know this comes up every year too, but we love the NEF, right?
We do love the NEF.
I know you're sitting at home, Andrea, we may be listening, we love the NEF. But I do think we definitely can clear this up and it'd still be a really impactful program. It's just we'll have a little bit more, you know, a process involved. Kind of like fundraising, when you're just accepting fundraising all these years for things and it might never come through us because they're just going ahead and buying it for whatever organization they're doing it for. I mean, this just at least, you know, makes it seem a little bit more transparent and that we're involved in the process.
All right, so it sounds like the goal is to clarify the policy and get some details on the naming of the principal's office in time for our May 20th meeting. Whenever we can get into the packet would be helpful so that we can, we can vote on this on the, on the 20th. As you said, this is time sensitive for.
In the event they're not all watching right now, I will bring it up at our meeting next Wednesday.
All right, we'll make it a priority for the 20th.
And also how the, the NEF vets, I'm not saying specifically to the recent principle, but the, you know, overall how they vet the naming.
The people who get that.
Yeah, because I mean, that's a bigger issue, which I'm not going to go into right now, but, you know, there's been instances in the community where there's questions about, you know, buildings that were named after folks.
That may be a broader conversation.
Yeah, that's why, we're not getting into that now.
But I think it's, we could, you know.
Yes.
And I, and one more thing to add to your list, sorry, it's really three, since the list, I think we do have to ultimately approve the list as well, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, one last thing.
Yes, go ahead.
Brian, can you, since you're the NEF.
The bridge.
The bridge, yes. The Swaying Bridge. Can you?
I hope that catches on.
Can you ask them to fill in the gray matter there?
Sure.
Yeah, that would be really wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, so our next item is voting to approve our meetings calendar for '24, '25. We looked at a draft of this at our last meeting. Thank you, Ms. Yell, for making those corrections. So, I've looked this over, it looks good to me. Any, any questions?
I have a motion.
Any concerns?
It's not, not concerning question, but I'm clarifying. The city council and school committee joint meeting, that's actually their meeting, right? That's actually a thing that the city council runs?
Can you say that?
Or the mayor runs?
Kind of touched that meeting, is that you?
Because it's mostly Ethan running a presentation and then maybe a little.
I think in the charter it's considered a joint meeting, it's not like one or the other. Even though I would say arguably it's more a city council meeting than a school committee meeting.
And Ms. Yell, you just put that in there as kind of a placeholder, because I know you tried to get a date in there, but they weren't prepared with the date, correct?
Usually each year, the, the dates actually come from the city and we keep it on the schedule so that everybody on the committee is aware to hold that place.
I'll just put in Thanksgiving as a placeholder.
We'll have a big meal in addition.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, to approve the '24, '25 school committee meeting calendar.
Second.
This is policy BE, by the way. Any discussion?
I would just say, it's probably right to leave that open, just because city council approves their meetings very differently, whereas this body, you know, approves their meetings throughout the whole year. City council doesn't always, always do that, so.
So you're comfortable with the TDA November day, that's good? Great. Anything else for discussion? Okay, all in paper?
Hi.
Thank you. All right, for subcommittee updates, I don't know that we have a whole lot, but I'll just run down the list. Mr. Callahan?
We meet next Thursday?
Next week? Okay. Not this Thursday, but next.
The 16th.
Okay, great. And Ms. Walker, you said there's a policy meeting coming up?
Yeah, we meet on the 14th. Got it. Next Tuesday? No, next Monday, sorry, the 13th.
Okay, great, thank you. And then Mr. Callahan, fundraising advisory presentation at the next meeting?
Ms. Walker and I still have to get our schedules together to meet up for that.
Did you say you're not going to be at the next meeting? Our next meeting?
Well, I thought this was going to happen before that, so I will not be able to be here on the 20th though.
All right, well, you.
I have full confidence in Ms. Walker to present it on her own.
Or, or it could be the following meeting.
Or you can push it to June.
I apologize that we have that video.
No, it's okay.
But yeah, I'd prefer that Mr. Callahan is here too, so.
Yeah. A lot of this stuff won't happen until next year anyway, so it's.
Yeah, it's not super time sensitive, right?
No.
Okay.
I motion to assign Julie Walker the role of bridge.
We've tried them, we've tried, we've tried, it's just circumstances have interfered.
All right, so I think that's June, is it June 3rd? Does that sound right? We have a meeting?
What's that?
Like the meeting, the meeting after that would probably be June 3rd, I think. Whatever that is.
That sounds right.
Yeah.
All right, so maybe put you on for June 3rd for that presentation?
Yeah, we're going to hold to that.
Sounds good. Ms. Walker, anything going on with SISOL? Will there be one more meeting or?
I don't think so.
Don't think so? Okay.
I think we might try to pull, pull one together.
Oh, okay, all right, you just keep me posted.
I will.
All right, so we'll just, we'll keep putting it on the agenda as a placeholder for now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Boger, we did have a communications meeting.
We did, not a lot to report, but Ms. Furlong was, was very helpful in updating us on all the technological updates on the website in particular, which are going in the right direction, and we talked about integrating the app a bit going forward. I did reach out to city council president Cameron to talk about opportunities to communicate better with the city council, and he was very open to that, which is great to hear, and I'll check in with the mayor on that as well. Maybe we'll add the NEF to the list, talk about bridging as much as possible. So we have one more meeting.
There's a t-shirt.
Yeah.
We are at the bridge.
Thank you. All right, superintendent's report.
Okay, so I just, we have some numbers for everybody for the school choice. So you can see that at this time, they're filling up pretty quick. We'll have to do a lottery at this point, I think, in grade, obviously grade four, five, grade six, and we're holding steady at grade nine. So I think that's a good, a good sign that we're doing some great stuff here in New buryport, that people want to come over. The other piece is we always look at the younger grades, kindergarten and also first grade, and we monitor those numbers, so we'll provide you that information as, as we move along.
Could you explain the lottery process? I know that's not something you have to do routinely.
Correct, so we, we also get another commitment that these families are going to 100% attend to the best of our ability. And then we'll put, if you look at grade four, we would put nine names in a little box, and then myself, Michelle, and another central office person, and then we pull them. And then once they get pulled, we pull them in order, so you'll have the three spots and then people on a waiting list by, by the lottery. So that's how we do it.
So you would, do the families need to be in attendance for that, or just?
No.
But they do need to get back to you to?
Yeah, we just want to make.
Reconfirm their interest.
Correct, we just, especially the, the higher, the higher numbers there, you know, some people put in school choice, we just want to make sure they're, because we have, you know, more, less slots than demand, we just want to make sure they're committed to, before we start doing the lottery. But then if there's a waiting, the waiting list, if there is a family that commits now, but all of a sudden, end of June or early July, they're not coming, then we would call the person on the first.
Next name on the list.
Okay, so for, for example, with the nine applications for fourth grade and the three slots, you would have everybody in order, one through nine, so everybody is at least somewhere.
Yeah, they'll be on a waiting.
On a waiting list and could potentially move up. Because I know, and from talking to Ms. Yell about this, that it's, it's a very fluid situation with people applying and pulling out, right? So, so that means everyone maybe has, you know, potentially a shot at it.
Correct.
Okay, that sounds good.
But just to piggyback on you, so, but people can, can be there in person for the lottery?
They, we haven't.
We just haven't done, we haven't done many of them, right? I mean, I, I remember going to one when my daughter was.
Yeah, I don't.
Kindergarten maybe? And like, there was like three of us for something and we went, I don't think she, I don't know, I don't think she got it, but I do remember that was an option that we could go, but that was before you, so I don't.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I, you may not want to recommend that, probably be disappointed.
Could be, yeah, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking, apparently.
It's about transparency.
Want to be for transparency purposes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I didn't, like, oh, yeah.
You can do it in one of these meetings, like get one of those barrels.
Yeah, we'll use the bingo.
I mean, it's sort of like when you open a bid for a vendor. You just, you provide that opportunity, they don't have to come, but they can.
I guess we could do that, sure.
Like when they draw our names for valid order. You can go.
Yeah.
You want?
It's super fun.
Yes, the charter school does that.
They do.
They have a public.
Yeah, they do, yeah.
Yeah.
Lottery.
Do you know offhand, the, since ninth grade is so popular, where are they, where are they coming from?
What is it?
Where are the kids coming from?
From what grade?
Like what cities for ninth grade?
Yeah, what, what we've seen is the charter school, what we end up having, some of the Newburyport students come in their freshman year, and then that kind of, that eighth grade class all comes together. So we see, we have a lot of charter school students come in, so from multiple communities.
So one's a resident and then the other 10 kids want to come along?
Correct, yeah, it's usually, that's where we see, so it's, I mean, I can have, I have a breakdown of the different areas. But when you look at, for grade nine, typically that eighth grade charter school class stays together and they all come, so, which is kind of a nice thing, they stay in Newburyport.
All right.
All set?
Next topic.
All right, next topic. Where'd we go? Oh, the NS Academy, Exetera. All right, so this is another, if you have read those superintendent emails for the past couple of years, Exetera is a company, really it's a foundation and a CEO as we talk about jobs and job availability. So they focus on augmented reality, virtual reality and mixed reality, and with the advancement of technology in the United States, this is going to be an area in the next one to two years that there's going to be a lack of job skills around this. So this company does a couple of things. What we're going to be piloting with the NEF and part of our summer advanced academy is we're going to be running a class, well, they'll send in a couple of instructors, then some of our teachers, our STEM teachers will also be part of the class. It's 25 hours for students, and we're looking for grades nine to 12, for 20, up to 25 students that will be learning these techniques and then designing, you know, AR project and basically I'll just, it's set up, animation, user interactions, material design, lighting, building video demos, presentation deck, and then upon conclusion, the students will be presented a working AR application that can be added to their portfolio. So this 24-hour class lays out the foundation of more advanced study and the experience of design, gameplay interaction, eventual certification and unit certified associate. It's ideal for students grades nine through 12, and they'll have a capstone project after that. I think eventually this is our first pilot for our students as part of the advanced academy, plus our teachers getting trained in this new technology. But we're going to be seeing, I think, this capability coming fast and furious into the school systems, and we really, I think in Newburyport, want to position ourselves to be ahead of the curve on, on this. You know, the, the VR capabilities is happening, I think, in a lot of the businesses already. It's happening, you know, in a lot of the different fields in the workforce, so I think eventually I'll bring the CEO to kind of talk to the school committee, because the advancement of technology is, it's, you know, it's, it's, I don't know, can we say Ms. Furlong? It's pretty cool. So instead of building a space, like renovating entire space, you can utilize virtual reality to kind of do a lot of that work, fixing a car, it's, so, we're really excited about that. So that's part of our advanced academy, similar to what Mr. Marcos talks about, advanced academy, we have summertime, so it's really enrichment activities for students, middle school and high school, very similar to all of us that were, you know, you had the college week long course, so we offer week long courses and different electives, and then we open it up for students. So this one, we've already had six students sign up for this, we're looking for 20, but it's, it's going to be really exciting. So there's that, and then, what's the last piece?
Hiring status.
Hiring status. So for the restructuring, we're in the process of hiring the two program supervisors, and we have some strong internal candidates, which we expected. And then the TFLs will be looking at those hirings for next week or the week after. We have a lot, as we said, what we anticipated is a lot of staff within the district that are interested in applying for these jobs, and we'll see how that falls out. Our assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, we're setting up our committees, we'll start those interviews, the initial interviews, next week. And then today, we met with James McSweeney. So we started and completed our hiring updates facilities manager, so on May 20th. I'll introduce you to Mr. James McSweeney currently. He's the deputy director of the Andover facilities, buildings for both the town and the schools. He also has extensive background working in schools, moving public schools for many years as a facilities manager, and he brings a, a lot of expertise to, to the job. So he's excited, we met with him today, and then I, he'll be here on May 20th. We also had strong candidate pool for that, and we had some strong internal candidates that, a lot of current staff brought some skills to the table that we didn't know. So part of that process, very similar to, I think, what we've done for special education, is I think it would be important for us to also develop a pathway for some of those, for our own, you know, maintenance and custodian personnel that have that job skill or the desire to become. So it was, it was really a great process for all of us, but Mr. McSweeney, I think, is going to be a great fit. Presented, you know, in Andover, the selectmen, town meetings, so.
Now he did the town and he did the schools? It's amazing. That's one of the, I've never heard of that before. It's incredible.
He must, that's why he applied here, because he knew it was just the schools, so.
Exactly.
So, but yeah, so that's, that's our hiring update, and by May 20th, we'll have names to all of these new positions, hopefully, for, for some of the members. All right?
That's good.
Thank you.
What about the assistant superintendent?
We're starting that next week, yeah. So we just formulated our committee, we're going to start the interviews next week. So I'm hoping we may have finalists or finalists by the 20th, but that might take a little bit more time.
Okay, so maybe you'll have an update for us at the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, all set?
Yes.
And new, new business?
I just had a question.
Yeah.
I know the school councils are going over the handbooks right now, and we don't approve them, but we're supposed to know about changes to them.
That's on the agenda for our next meeting?
The 20th, correct.
The one you'll miss.
You'll miss it.
We have to write a public comment, how about that? I have questions again about our policy with what it says, and then.
Just about the dress code?
Yeah.
At NOC?
Because if our dress code is not, it just says, don't wear anything with swears or alcohol and tobacco on it. That's our dress code in the policy book. But the NOC dress code still has the no midriffs and all that.
More restrictive than our policy?
We, we did, I think that's okay, it can have, it can be more restrictive than the district wide.
Respectfully disagree. It's like federal and state law, but also that one in particular, I went to a whole meeting with a bunch of eighth grade kids last year.
Oh, yeah. That was fun.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's just one of those things that happens kind of outside of us, and we never hear, and I've been saying this for years, we should have the school councils come in and give a little, hey, this is what we did. In theory, the principals are coming and telling us what the school council talked In theory, the principals are kind of, and telling us what the school council's talking about, but we don't get, you know, regular reports from the principals either, so, if they're so, if they're so important, we should know what they're talking about, I think, so.
They post their agenda minutes.
So do we. It's not the same.
You can find it on.
It's not the same. Yeah, I just don't like the fact that we have a policy that is kind of like, without specifically saying, unless otherwise noted in the student handbook, and then they kind of have extra rules, because parents look at our policy book, and then they're like, what the heck, why do we have this extra rule here?
Well, I think that's a valid, kind of a valid point, and I think that the principals should think about that lack of consistency with our district-wide dress code.
But I think we reduced the specifics and hours on purpose.
Yeah, we did, we did at this request of students.
Yeah, right.
Well, the policy is, the school committee policy's guaranteeing, you know, following the laws, master of laws. Student handbooks are more procedural, so you're in compliance with the law, so it's, you know, if you look at being late for school, like three detentions versus two detentions, is more the procedural piece that's in schools.
Well, if it's specific, though, there's nothing that's, there's no rule of law that says you can't show your belly button at school, and that's one of the policies, though. And it's, it's fully applied towards girls.
Dress code, well, in general, dress code, right, and I'm not, I'm not arguing, I'm not going to argue the dress code right now, but that's something we can definitely take a look at.
Sure.
But dress code that distracts from the learning environment is, is a, is the policy. Yeah, that's the general policy for schools.
But it's not our, not an hour policy.
It is, but you're.
It doesn't say it like that, though. We wouldn't have gone to it, but I'm saying, we have to look at it.
It's just not getting into specifics.
So they're kind of, you know, talking to each other, basically. But I'll miss the meeting, so you guys fix it.
Well, just so we're all up to speed, has that, has that shifted?
No, so, can I just clarify with the policy? It does actually say what the superintendent says. It says that the students shall have a right to express themselves by the dress and hairstyle of their own choosing, provided students meet their responsibility to dress and groom in a manner that conforms to the reasonable and acceptable standards of health, safety, and cleanliness, and that does not distract or causes disruption to the educational process. And then we don't, we do specifically say in our policy, while it is not practical to publish a definitive list of requirements or prohibitions, the following guidelines should be followed, and it only calls out inappropriate words or picture of promote drugs and/or alcohol.
Right, and ours used to go into the details.
Ours used to go into the details, and it used to include midriffs and all this stuff. And at the request of students at the high school, that was removed from the handbook, but then we also had to make it consistent with the, we had to make the policy consistent, so that, anyway. So I do think it's important conversation to have with the, the school council level, that they are, they're being more strict than our school-wide district policy, and that they should maybe adjust accordingly.
All set?
All right. Any other new business?
I'll just say, Matilda was awesome.
It was.
So, you know, I know Theo brought that up earlier, but very, very cool show, it was like to be there. Just from me, you know, budget, we'll get in to the council by the end of this week, actually, we'll, we'll get the memo in by tomorrow, and then, you know, the council will have the, the budget when they walk into the meeting on Monday. It looks like we're good for 4.5% for schools, which is great. Capital improvement pan, we were able to get some projects, and we haven't finalized that yet, I'm not going to tell you what they are, but we.
The rug?
We got a few.
The rug!
The rug!
There was a bunch that was in for this year, so we got a couple, we got a couple of them in, in there, so.
Nine, one, one.
10 years later, we got a bunch of squares.
Was that all?
That's pretty much it, yeah.
Okay, anyone else?
I have one.
Yeah.
So I got a packet from MASC in advance of the annual meeting, which typically is in November, and has a bunch of forms for nominating delegates, et cetera, et cetera. I'm going to give this to Joanne, and I think we probably, it would just be helpful to have it in our packet next, for next time, and then we can decide what we want to take any action on, anything.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Yep.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.